Hello, everybody. This regular meeting of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners is called to order at 3:35 PM on February 16, 2021. Today, we're honored, greatly honored, to have Reverend Don Tolliver, Vice President of the Tallahassee Chapter of the National Action Network, to provide the indication. Reverend?
Please go to the throne of grace. Father of our weary years, Father of our silent tears, thou who has brought us thus far along the way. Father, today we come thanking you for another opportunity to pray. Father, we come thanking you for February 16, 2021. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to have a discussion and a conversation on great and good government. Father, we pray that you watch over each and every commissioner, open their minds, their hearts, and their souls to the people. Father, today we ask you to continue to pray with them and their families. Pray for each and every person tonight. Pray for the city attorney, county attorney, pray for the county administrator. Father, we continue to pray that we look after the people of Leon County and continue to work diligently to solve all the problems, to be able to understand what the people's plighting, for the Jew will stand forward. We thank you for your son, Jesus, who not only humbly died, but rose from the third day with all power in his hand. We ask that we open our hearts and our minds this evening to remember that we are serving mankind. This is our predator in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Mr. Cummings, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Reverend Tolliver, and thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
All right, Commissioners, I would now like to move on to our awards and presentations. Up first, we will recognize the hard work and dedication of Ms. Annie Johnson, our second Leon County Volunteer Champion. As you may recall, at our meeting in December, the Board approved recognizing community volunteers and organizations who not only serve us year-round, but who also have stepped up during these challenging times. At our January program, we recognized our very first volunteer champion, the illustrious Peggy Sanford with Sustainable Tallahassee for the Rags to Bags Mask Program. Today, we recognize Annie Johnson and her well-known Project Annie Meal Program. Annie has been helping feed and clothe those in need for years, most especially with special meal events during the holidays. For more specifics on Annie and the program, I would now like to turn it over to our very own Royal King, the county's Volunteer Services Manager. Royal?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. County Administrator. Today, I'm excited to recognize our second Leon County Volunteer Champion, Annie Johnson. For the last 22 years, Annie Johnson, through her nonprofit organization, Project Annie, has served and hosted the Thanksgiving and Christmas Dinner in the Frenchtown area, handing out more than 1,000 dinners each year at both events. Last year's holiday season was no different. In the midst of the pandemic, Annie provided to-go meals for citizens. Annie doesn't just do mass feedings on the holidays. She also provides those in need with bags of groceries twice a month, serves a fresh, a free hot meal three times a month on Saturdays, and provides clothing to those who need it. For 2020, Project Annie served over 1,000 families and 3,598 people. But there's no better person able to talk about the work she's done than Annie Johnson herself. Annie, take it away.
This is Annie. What you do here, and while you do it. I love working here at Project Annie. I feed the peoples and clothe the peoples, and I love my work very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. It's a pleasure to have you here with us today.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Johnson, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yes, Ms. Johnson, did you have anything more to add?
Well, I would like to say that I like working and helping people to the Lord, and I thank the community for helping me to be a success in feeding the peoples.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Really appreciate everything that you do for this community. Thank you. As usual, after tonight's meeting, Annie will receive a certificate acknowledging her service, and the county will be sharing her story on all of our media platforms. Let's give, please, a round of applause for Ms. Annie Johnson. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator, will you please introduce the next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your next presentation is from Sika Rose Green, and providing perhaps an introduction for this. This was requested by Commissioner Dozier. It's the Children's Home Societies of the Florida Big Bend Region on behalf of Sable Palm Elementary to discuss the Community Partnership School. And Commissioner Dozier, I didn't know if you might have an introduction?
Well, thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Yes, Ms.?
... inadequate health care. It weighs heavy on them, and many times, they cannot focus on their education. So what's the solution? The Community Partnership School, which is based on four pillars: collaborative leadership, expanded learning, wellness support, and family and community engagement. And it is important to note that the successful implementation of these pillars is benchmarked on certification, and that is done through the achievement of standards that define the framework elements for best practices for the Community Partnership School model. So it's only when these four work together and create a synergy that you have the success of the model. So I already know, when you're looking at this slide, you're thinking, oh, my goodness, what on earth is this? This is Sable Palm Community Partnership School. So, the model is based on core partners. You have a nonprofit partner, which is Children's Home Society. You have your medical partner. We are fortunate to have FSU Primary Health, that is our medical partner. You have a university or academic partner, and we are very fortunate to partner with Florida Annam University, Go Rattlers, that's my alma mater. And then, of course, the school district, Leon County Schools. But you will see that there are other logos presented here, and that is because what we do is help frame what the needs are in partnership with the students, their families, and the communities. But those needs are met through providers and other partnerships in the community. So Bond Community Health has partnered with us from the beginning with dental services, including the dental bus, and securing funds for an actual chair that will be installed at the school to do dental exams. CCYS provides wellness supports in the form of mental health and behavioral counseling. Hyken Vision Bus has actually come up, given free eye exams and corrective lenses to not only our students, but their siblings that are in feeder schools. And Lively Technical College, we've partnered with the barbering school, and we already have had several free haircuts for our students because we know if we look good, we feel good, and that has become an ongoing partnership each week. And down in the corner, you'll see the City of Tallahassee. The City of Tallahassee and Leon County Schools believed in this model so much that they did one of my favorite things, and that's contribute funding so that the model can work. Leon County Schools has a recurring allocation of $25,000 that they give to us each year to support the school. And City of Tallahassee had been giving us $35,000, just recently up that to $60,000 recurring to help support the school. So, as I close, what do you think my ask is? So while I may come back before you and ask for some financial support, we know that Leon County wants to support this model, and we know that it can help be the great equalizer that education is in helping to eradicate poverty. But my ask is simple. Once we come out of this pandemic and we are able to have visitors at our school again, please consider coming and touring, because when you see it and see the impact on the students, their families, and the community, we know that you will want to invest some of your time, your talent, and your treasure to help support this proven and wonderful model. So with that, I'll close, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Green. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, not a question, but more of a shameless brag. My Leadership Tallahassee Class 36 built an outdoor classroom at Sable Palm Elementary, and Anna K. Hutchison is in my Leadership Tallahassee class, and I just wanted to say that's a great example of a community group coming together and partnering to create an incredible space at a public school. So, just a shameless brag on Leadership Tallahassee Class 36.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, forgive me, Mr. County Administrator, but I'm going to blame you for this one. I was caught off guard by the introduction, so I was rushing through that and didn't want to take too much time. I should have said I also had a great meeting with Sika Rose Green, and thank you for your presentation and for all your work you do at CHS and on behalf of the Community Partnership Schools. And I pointed out, Commissioner Jackson, that I think across this board, the Leadership Tallahassee Class, the outdoor classroom, looks fantastic. We are all committed to Children's Service Council, Boys and Girls Club. I mean, we have a lot of touchstones here that relate, and particularly 32304 in that area, the benefits that these young people, and I think by extension, their families, you would probably say, the support they have helps meet a lot of the goals and address the issues that we talk about all the time. So with that, Sika, it was good, succinct presentation, and as you promised, you were only going to ask about, you know, to ask us to visit the school after COVID, and I really look forward to that. And I love, you use the same in our meeting, the time, talent, and treasure, that there are different ways to get involved. When I look at county programs, we talked a little about IFIS Extension, about other programs, I know they're engaged with you, but both you and Anna K. did talk about staffing and perhaps some challenges or new opportunities this year. And just as a way to kind of get into what current issues you're facing, could you talk to us a little bit about that?
Yes, I can. And before I do that, if you'll allow me a little deference, Commissioner Welch, we just want to say thank you again to Leadership Tallahassee Class 36 for the outdoor classroom. What I did not, was not able to show on the slide is we've got partnerships with Leadership Tallahassee as well as KCCI, and that is what Commissioner Dozier referred to when she talked about the bike park. They helped secure funding to do a bike park there. So as you can imagine, when you are doing this type of model, it is very staff intense. And so we have four basic positions with the Community Partnership School, the Director, Anna K. Hutchison, our Expanded Learning Coordinator, our Wellness Supports Coordinator, and our Family and Community Engagement Coordinator. But there is still so much that needs to be done. And so what we've identified is that if we can use additional supports through AmeriCorps, and if you can believe it, we can get two full-time team members through AmeriCorps for only $8,000. AmeriCorps has partnered with the University of Central Florida, which is the keeper of the model through the Center for Community Partnership Schools, and they are allowing us to have a higher level of AmeriCorps team member with two for $8,000. And so that helps our staff to get a little bit relief and really be able to go out and get additional partners. For example, Mueller Express. Children's Home Society already partners with Mueller Express for our Foster Care, Adoption, and Independent Living Program. Wouldn't it be wonderful to partner with Mueller for additional dental services? That is a need that Bond is definitely helping to meet, but we could always use more partners. So if we have staff freed up to be able to investigate even more partners like that through this additional help through AmeriCorps, gosh, that would be a major, major assistance for the program.
Thank you, ma'am. And I will admit, my colleagues, and I'll bring it in here, Mr. Chair, that, Sika, you were dead set against any ask today, but in our conversation and as I ask questions, this $8,000 for AmeriCorps really stood out to me. And I would be interested in exploring how we could support Community Partnership Schools. If this was one option that was amenable to the Board, we can explore that. I'd love to hear the comments from my colleagues, but I was asking a question that she wasn't going to raise today, because this is extraordinary opportunity, and building those partnerships has such an incredible benefit for those young people in an exceptionally challenging year. So, thank you for that, and I'll let you move on, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Next, we have Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sika, thank you so much for the information. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for the information. You did leave out my dear friend and colleague under the leadership of Principal Anisha Robinson, who is a tireless worker, and much of this would not be even possible if it hadn't been for her willingness to think outside of the box and to involve so many different efforts from so many different people. I do want to give a special shout-out to the FSU College of Medicine, Dr. Daniel Van Dermy, and his vision for the center located off of Eisenhower, right across the street from Sable Palm, which is smack in the middle of the 32304, 32310 neighborhoods, which are, one out of every two kids is from a home with poverty, and one out of every three kids comes from a home with food insecurity in those two zip codes that are served by Sable Palm and the Partnership for Community Schools. Thank you so much for the presentation today. When you guys get ready to move a little further west with your efforts, we will be more than happy to have a seat at the table with you. Again, a phenomenal effort for the people that are many times most undeserved, underserved, and that would be our young people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Appreciate that.
We have Commissioner Cummings, and then I'll speak next to wrap it up.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, I just want to say that I've had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Green and her staff virtually. They've reached out to me. They are doing a tremendous job at Sable Palm, and my question to them was, we need you guys to reach out to some of the other schools in Leon County as well. So I just want to echo my fellow commissioners with accolades. They are doing a tremendous job, and I certainly support Commissioner Dozier's idea that perhaps we can look at some financial support for the organization. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Ms. Green, I just wanted to, Commissioner Dozier, you have another comment?
Until after your comments, sir.
Okay. Ms. Green, I just wanted to thank you and your entire team for everything you're doing. I had the pleasure of going to the Sable Palm Community Partnership launch in 2019. So it was great to be there, it was great to see the kids, and thank you for everything that you are doing. Really appreciate it. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Chair, since Commissioner Cummings generously mentioned the AmeriCorps positions, and I appreciate that, I would just like to make a motion to bring back an agenda item that gives us more information for the March 9 meeting on the AmeriCorps positions, the $8,000 ask, and to be considered at that time.
I'd second it, Mr. Chair.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All's in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Sika.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You too, Ms. Green. Thank you very much. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have a presentation from Amanda Wander from the Big Bend Continuum of Care and Homelessness.
Ms. Wander, can you hear us?
Yes, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you loud and clear.
All right. Thank you, guys, so much for allowing us to come before you today and explain who the Big Bend Continuum of Care is. There's been a lot of focus on homelessness, which is very exciting for us in our community because it means that we're starting to align our sights, and we can make some progress. So, the Continuum of Care has an eight-county coverage area, and what our responsibilities are is we serve as the lead agency for HUD and state homelessness funding, to apply for that funding and get it to the hands of providers. We also try to coordinate service providers who are doing homeless services, whether they're a contracted provider of ours, or whether they're just a partner in the community who is providing an essential service. Some of the things that we do on a regular basis include gathering and analyzing data and assisting communities in implementing their strategic responses to homelessness. As I've mentioned before, we coordinate a network of homeless service providers, and probably our biggest value-add service is our ability to measure the homeless system of care's performance and outcomes. One of the things that we do is we look at system performance based on seven different measures, and these measures are based from our major funder HUD. But the things that we like to look at, and we would like to see all homeless service agencies who are funded either by the city, county, United Way, what have you, we would like you all to consider adopting the same outcomes and measures. Since all of the funding doesn't necessarily flow through one entity, it's important that we share our outcomes and that we're all marching in the same direction to decrease homelessness. So the areas of focus that, where performance can be measured and improved, is the rate at which people exit the homeless system of care and then return to homelessness. We want to see that decrease. The length of time someone experiences homelessness, on average, that's about 138 nights within our COC coverage area. We would like to see something that is more in line with 30 days or less. We also want to see job and income growth, growth, so that people can sustain their housing. We want people to be able to obtain permanent housing, but also maintain them and measure that retention rate. We want to decrease homelessness altogether through our annual service count of those people needing homeless services. And we also want to decrease the number of instances where somebody would experience homelessness for the first time. We track all of this information through its shared data system, so we like to encourage any homeless provider to become engaged and track their services and track client-level needs in that database so we can comprehensively look at system performance. We also offer coordinated entry, and what this is, is a coordinated standardized assessment that ultimately is part of a referral process that gets people to services based on their needs and vulnerability. We can also determine what type of intervention somebody needs based on a standardized assessment called the VSADAT that we use, so we can give you an idea of if that person needs emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, or if they need something more intense, which is permanent housing with support services. Just so you know, our contracted service providers include Ability First, Big Bend Homeless Coalition, Catholic Charities of Northwest Florida, Capital City Youth Services, Connecting Everyone with Second Chances, specifically the Carney Center, and Refuge House. All of these entities serve as service providers for us for multiple types of services, but they also are our coordinated entry access points. So if there's anybody who needs homeless services, they can go to these various service providers and be assessed, and then interventions can be put in place. I have a few more resources for you guys if you want to check them out on your own. There's been a lot of community conversation around CityWalk specifically, so I did want to take some time and bring up some of the information that I have about CityWalk, and then you guys, there was also a city commission presentation done last week that was very thorough, so you're welcome to view that as well. What we are with regards to CityWalk right now, CityWalk has joined the Big Bend Continuum of Care as a member, so they're kind of representing a religious partner right now. They had also stepped forward in November and said they would be willing to help provide cold night shelter. Since they have started operating every night, we are no longer using them as a cold night shelter partner, because all of our cold night shelter partners are only operating for cold night shelters. There's no need to have a cold night shelter partner if they are operating every single day. We have also been providing some guidance and coaching to CityWalk. They have not necessarily accepted all of our recommendations, but we'd like to, you know, be able to continue to work with them, keep the lines of communication open, so that we can make sure that the people who are staying there are ultimately connected with our formal system of care and have permanent housing at their fingertips so that they can get out of homelessness. So that's where we are, and working with CityWalk now is to make sure that each person residing there is assessed, we understand what they need, and then we can kind of report back to the commissions on what is needed long-term to solve those specific individual instances of homelessness. I'll stop there and open it up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wander. Any comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Dozier?
Mr. Chair, I know this was just a presentation, but we did pass a strategic initiative at our retreat in January that focused on a coordinated plan for citing any future shelters, and I really appreciate, you know, the full board getting engaged on that. CityWalk is a District 5 issue, so I'm getting a lot of emails and stayed in touch with citizens over the last month and a half about over the last month and a half about this. And I know you all have seen a lot of those emails. So first and foremost, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Amanda for her leadership. I think there's been a lot of confusion about the role of Big Ben COC as it relates to CityWalk. And I'm struggling here because I can't speak to this without saying a lot of that confusion, I think, has come from some of the communication from our partner, the city of Tallahassee. And I think we're getting into some clarity there, but there was no role for Big Ben COC to shut down the shelter or anything like that. This assistance and helping guide them, hosting a Zoom for the neighborhood was fantastic. What, so we are, the city is in a process with CityWalk right now. I think there are ongoing neighborhood issues that could be addressed, but what I wanted to focus on today briefly, two key points. One, it really stands out to me, this suggestion to align our metrics for CHSP funding, our human service grant funding, with the metrics that Big Ben Continuum of Care follows for their contract providers. We have a lot of overlap. We fund Carney Center and others through CHSP. And if I'm not wrong, Amanda, improving our coordination and those metrics, having those metrics aligned, could qualify us for additional HUD funding from the federal government in the future. Could you speak to that for a second?
Sure. The more engagement that we have and the more incorporation of all homeless services in general that we have as a COC, the better we're able to leverage all types of different funding. So a lot of the funding opportunities that are available now are really cross-system collaborations. And for us to adequately be able to respond to those types of funding opportunities, we have to be able to prove that we can measure that we're efficient and that we are improving outcomes for our community related to homelessness. So that's probably the easiest way to prove that through system performance and kind of making sure that all systems or service providers who do any type of homeless service or prevention are engaged with the COC and working along the same lines of measurement of their outcomes.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chair, you are a appointee to the Big Ben COC. I served on the board for several years at the beginning of the current form of COC. So I'm going to look forward to hearing your thoughts about that. But I believe that this new administration, this process was created under the Obama administration, and it's likely that we will see more emphasis on the COC model and funding during Biden administration. So getting these coordinated pieces together now, I've been thinking about this for several days, and one phrase comes to mind, we're not going to take blame, I don't think, for COVID or a recession. It's how we respond to these issues that we could really be judged on. And so recognizing that we have these opportunities and we can step up our coordination, I think, is really important. So the strategic initiative was one. And County Attorney, if I'm getting close, I'm going to ask for a little extra. Yes, okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask for an extra.
So Commissioner Dozier's made a motion for extra time. Is there a second?
Thank you.
All's in favor of the motion to extend time for Commissioner Dozier, say aye? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Continue.
I will not take all three minutes. I'll bring it in here. But the, aligning the metrics with CHSP funding, Amanda, you also made a comment at the city commission meeting last week and in our one-on-one meeting, that really understanding all of the funding from both local governments will help assess our needs and where we are. So I think having some coordination on the funding piece and information sharing. And lastly, Mr. Chair, I believe Commissioner Porter brought this up at the city commission meeting. I didn't hear this part at the very end, but I have spoken with the county administrator. We have some low-hanging fruit here on cold night shelter. Our emergency management team has done an exceptional job helping to coordinate this along with our Health and Human Service Department and others, Big Ben Continuum of Care. I'd like to suggest we codify that procedure so that it is in place in future years. And I think they've really stepped it up this year due to all the challenges with COVID, and so this would be the right time to move forward. So again, that's assessing the metrics at CHSP and making sure they align, adding the funding alignments or an understanding of the funding from both local governments into the larger coordinated piece under our strategic initiative, and then codifying the policies for citing cold night shelters through, with the lead based on Amanda's suggestion and very complimentary to Leon County Emergency Management Team. And I would give Amanda a chance to correct anything I just said, but I think I summed that up.
Yeah, that is perfect. I think that we have worked incredibly closely, especially since the onset of COVID, with Shinton and Kevin Peters with two different departments within the county. So we have coordination as far as at the staff level. We've never seen this before between the city and county, but we need something a little higher. We need something that is going to be more formal, to be able to continue our work and make sure that all of our policies align and that we're ultimately each going to achieve our goals related to homelessness.
Thank you, Ms. Wander. Commissioner Dozier, is that in the form of a motion? Is that what you were suggesting?
I was going to ask for some direction from the county administrator. I'm sure I'm running up on the three minutes now with the answer, but to bring back an agenda item to kind of assess those, two of those three pieces, the cold night and CHSP, the third, the funding can be wrapped into the strategic initiative. Does that sound appropriate?
It does.
Okay. Do I need to add in the funding component, or you have a note of that for the coordinated piece?
Right. I believe that we are probably working on those issues now, so.
I believe so.
Yeah. I think we've got it covered.
So a motion to bring back an agenda item about our CHSP measurements, metrics, to align those with Big Ben Continuum of Care and develop, codify our policies for cold night shelter with Leon County Emergency Management in the lead. That's my motion.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Is there a second for that motion? All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier and seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Any discussion on the motion? I do have Commissioner Welch in the speaker's queue. Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have comments on the motion, just questions for Amanda.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. If you don't mind, let me proceed with the motion, and then you'll be right up next. See no discussion on the motion as stated by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All's in favor of the motion, say aye? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Welch, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amanda, I'm new to these issues, obviously, and I think I heard you say that you guys do a count annually. Is that correct of our homeless population?
Yes, that is correct. And we actually did go ahead with that this year, even through COVID. Our unsheltered population specifically has been very transient, given that, you know, the Carney Center had to relocate folks into hotels. There was nothing, we weren't able to catch folks at Lake Ella anymore. So we want to make sure that what our numbers, what we thought they were, they are. We had initially thought that our unsheltered population had doubled through COVID, but we have done our count, and preliminary numbers show that it has not doubled. But it is still an issue, and we still have around 100 people who are unsheltered in our community experiencing homelessness right now.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
So you said we have 100 unsheltered, or?
100 unsheltered, and we haven't tabulated the numbers for all of the folks who are in shelter, but typically a holistic look. Last year's count was about 750 people experiencing homelessness, either in shelters or unsheltered.
Do you feel like if we did that count more often, you could better assess folks that are needing services and needing help?
Not necessarily. We actually are able to get most of the information about those people's needs through our coordinated entry process and through two City of Tallahassee outreach workers. I think designating a couple more outreach workers for the unincorporated Leon area might be helpful, but since we staff every single case every two weeks, we do pretty well with getting the information.
My concern would be that if you have a situation like COVID, which I think we all acknowledge has exacerbated the issue in our community, that you'd have a lot of transient or fluidity in the unsheltered or the homeless population, people coming in, coming out, and it may be hard for you guys to keep track of those folks. And so that was the sort of genesis of my question. And then my last question, just real briefly, is do we have any solutions on the horizon that are innovative, things that other communities are doing? Because I'm sure everybody's experiencing the similar rise in issues as associated with COVID and sheltering, you know, coed or whatever, group sheltering being shut down. Do we have any ideas? Is there anything we can do to help you guys solve the problems that we're experiencing? Thank you.
I think that the focus really needs to remain on permanent solutions. We need to focus on things that solve homelessness. And though emergency shelter is kind of a component of our system of care, it shouldn't be the component we invest the most resources in. The components that should be expanded are permanent supportive housing and as well as rapid rehousing. And through COVID, we have been given some additional flexibility with some COC funding so that we might be able to serve some harder to serve people through some of that mainstream funding for rapid rehousing, but we need some support services to be able to keep those folks in that housing. So focusing on permanent housing is really going to get our community in a different place. And we have an unusually high rate of chronic homelessness here, so that's probably where we're going to see the biggest impact as far as if we focus on housing those individuals. There's about 260 people right now that we know are chronically homeless. And if we were able to house them immediately in permanent supportive housing, that would be a huge weight off of the system of care.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Any other comments or questions for Ms. Wander? Amanda, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And as Commissioner Dozier said, and you know, I mean, I recently joined the board of the Big Ben COC, very much interested in working with you and the rest of the board and your team on addressing the issues here. So thank you for everything. Really appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much.
All right. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for today's COVID update, I am just going to introduce Claudia Blackburn. Claudia is going to give us an update on the status of vaccinations.
Ms. Blackburn, welcome. Can you hear us?
I can. I can hear me okay.
Yes, we can. Thank you very much.
Great, great. Great presentations thus far. Good afternoon, county managers, chairman, mayor, commissioners. Just briefly, before I get to the vaccinations, we are at 27,247 cases of COVID-19 in Florida, Leon County residents, and sadly, 266 deaths. We are seeing a decline in our positivity rate as well as our average number of cases each day. Our positivity rate for the last couple of weeks has been 5.16% with 109 cases per day, so that is an improvement. We have had three cases of the UK variant here, which may explain the continued high number of cases. And our cases are disproportionately in the 18 to 24-year age group. That is 30% of our cases in the last two weeks have been in that age group versus 17% of the population. So as far as the vaccination program goes, collectively, the healthcare partners of Leon County, along with FSU and FAMU, have vaccinated 37,361 people. 16,936 of those have received at least one dose, and 20,425 have received the complete series, two doses. We are continuing our quest to vaccinate at least 80% of people 65 and over, and right now, we're at 65%. We today are tied for first with McCullough in St. John's County, so we'd like to stay, you know, in the top 10 if at all possible. We have dedicated health department staff and there's thanks for the progress that we've made, and I'd like to give a special shout-out to FSU this week and last week for helping us work through our list of 16,000, and now they're working up with a new list of people that are registered in shared care. Some new news, I'm sure you've heard, FAMU has been designated as a state COVID vaccination site for the underserved, and they will begin serving people on Thursday. They will be open seven days a week and provide vaccinations to 200 new people each day. We will work closely with them to support their efforts, and the task force on education and engagement, which is aimed at increasing the immunization rate among Black and Brown residents, is working in lockstep with FAMU as well. We understand that people are tired. You're probably tired of hearing me give you the same report every couple weeks, and I appreciate the opportunity. And we hope that the vaccine rollout is, and the declining numbers are encouraging and re-energizing. But we ask people that they view the public health measures not as the enemy, but as the roadmap for a faster and more sustainable recovery. In addition to getting vaccinated when it's your time for your priority group, and we hope that you'll do so at that time, the best way right now to slow the spread and stay safe, because it's not over, is to wear a mask, practice social distancing, and wash your hands. There is some new guidance on the CDC website that talks about double masking, and the point of this is really to improve the fit of the mask. And so I'd encourage everyone to take a look at the guidance and look for reinforcing media messages that will be out in the next few weeks. Thank you, commissioners. Again, I just appreciate your support of public health, and I'm happy to answer any questions and to follow up with you if I don't have the information right now. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Ms. Blackburn. Vice Chair Proctor would like to make a comment or question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Blackburn, thank you for your continuing efforts to do what y'all do at public health. My question is, are the inmates at the Leon County Jail being given shots? And if not, what is preventing them?
I, the last conversation I had with them, they are not, there are, I think, about 20 that are 65 and over. I do know that the healthcare workers there have been vaccinated.
Does the CDC or any of the national guidelines call for inmates to be given shots, given their vulnerability to those who come into their population and bring in the virus? Is there any national encouragement toward giving shots to inmates?
I would have to check the website, but I believe there is. I mean, it does make sense to do that, and there may be a way to do that locally. I believe the federal prison have received vaccines for the inmates, at least those that are 65 and over.
I have received inquiry about that, and I did not know. And if you can really, really check on that for us, I will be able to give accurate information to those who are making that inquiry. If there is a federal encouragement for that vulnerable population, I certainly would love if we were able to include and to expedite inclusion of inmates at Leon County Jail. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. I'll follow up on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any other comments or questions for commissioners? Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Blackburn, thank you for that report. Last month, you reported on some initiatives that were being undertaken to address the reluctance in the minority communities against taking the vaccine. Can you give us an update on how those initiatives are working, and do you have any numbers to provide as far as the percentages in those communities that have been vaccinated?
You know, I think the biggest update is this development with FAMU being a vaccination site. site. And that's going to add a huge dimension, a trusted site, trusted people. And I think that's going to be really important. I can't tell you what Dr. Bryant's group is doing, but I'd be happy to request an update from her. I can tell you that the last data that I looked at, and it's probably about a week old, is that the percentage of the Black population that's 65 and over that's been vaccinated was just under 25%. So we definitely have a ways to go.
Can I follow up? Ms. Blackburn, is there any specific initiatives that's being targeted to raise that percentage from 25%? Is it anything that you all are doing?
We don't have a specific initiative right now, other than to be part of that task force and to work closely with FAMU. So I think the focus has been on, you know, getting the vaccine site. So I'd be happy to do some checking, but I'm not aware of anything in particular right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Dozier, and then I'll wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Claudia, as always. FAMU site is very exciting. Good question about the jail. I was curious about that. And it's interesting to know there's only 20 inmates over 65. I think you said that. I did have a question. I saw the youth numbers going up, and I missed the percentage you mentioned, the young population and the positivity rate. There has been an increase with that group. Is that what you said earlier?
30% of the cases in the last two weeks have been in that 18 to 24 age group. We have seen that before, so it's not, it's not new, but that's where we are right now.
So, Norm, in the past, almost a year now, we have, it seems like we've often seen a spike in our positivity rate community-wide in other age groups after we see an increase in that younger age group. Am I right in thinking that? I mean, it seems to follow that other population groups are exposed when the young folks really get it and are out in the community. Is that right?
Yes, generally, that is what we see.
Okay. This is something for my colleagues. We can't police every college student, every young person, for sure. I did have a very interesting experience to see a group of young men doing a service project, which was admirable, but not one of them wore masks, a very large group together. And it really hit home. That was right before I saw these numbers going up. And I think I have sympathy for university partners and school partners and others, and parents, for that matter. But this is one area that I am concerned about, because we've seen that community-wide increase in our rates after the youth increase. So I just wanted to draw that out today. The, I think the other question I had was actually for the county administrator. So, Mr. Chair, I'll just direct this. And Claudia, thank you for all of your work. The vaccine rates are great, and I hope the new online system is working well. I hear you finally cleared out that original list, and well done on that end.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. County Administrator, this is not a question that I have asked. There's a lot of sensitivity around that. I want to respect this. But I am curious how things have been going for the last year with our county staff. We have an incredible group of people. They've been working, many of them tirelessly. There is mental health, leave, other challenges, family challenges, that I assume a lot of our staff are dealing with. And also, I hear comments every now and then about county staff not complying with our own mask rules. And I know that you, from the administration end, have really, you've been putting out some messages. We've been seeing that. But I'm wondering, how is a board respecting our firewall and that you are managing our staff on an individual basis and in the departments, how we can get a sense of how our staff is doing, and if there's anything that we could do to help support and to really reinforce that the Leon County mask mandate pertains to Leon County staff as well, and it is important for all of us to find it. Again, I understand the sensitivity with this, because I think many folks are doing the best they can. But as I hear more and more comments from others who may see some of our staff without masks, it kind of got to that point where I needed to bring it up here, and I'm wondering if you could speak to that for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, and thank you for that. Yeah, as far as our staff goes, their staff is holding up exceptionally well under the circumstances. We have tried to take best practices relative to our staff's wellness and capacity throughout this event. Certainly, if there is a, if there is a federal program in place or a state program in place that affords any benefits or anything like that to employees, we certainly have embraced that here, and we've gone further than that in many cases. So from that standpoint, under the circumstances, you're right, working hard, working around the clock, and doing really exceptionally well. I'm happy to report to you with confidence as far as the workforce is concerned. In terms of, of the mask and personal protection and protocols, I will say that we have missed no opportunity to reinforce this with our staff. We too, not unlike lots of workplaces, have had outbreaks in our workplace, which is unfortunate. And we always, we certainly don't wait for that opportunity, but we've, it has created opportunities to hold employees in the county and supervisors accountable for enforcing those rules that are in place. And they are rules, and there are no exceptions to them in the workforce. And our employees are monitored for their compliance with that, really, whenever they're, whenever they are during work hours for Leon County. So, and I think things are good. I think you could probably, we all hear things about what people see in the community in terms of masking, but we, it's our efforts to set the standard for that as a workplace. And so it's an ongoing process, but I would say, from my standpoint, I'm hearing very good things in the workplace relative to that as well.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you.
Mr. Dozier?
Chair, just one quick follow-up, and I appreciate you mentioning that there had been outbreaks that have taken place. I have heard that as well. Again, that is a sensitive piece. And I want to just reinforce this. I'm not only saying that it's a public perception that county employees wear masks because it's the county policy, but it is first and foremost to protect their colleagues themselves and others. And if there have, and we don't have a number, but if there have been, you know, a number of cases or outbreaks, as you said, I would just reinforce that a healthy workforce, mental, physical health, spiritual, that is something that this board should and I know is concerned about. So thank you for mentioning that. If there's anything we can do in budget, I appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Mr. County Administrator, Commissioner Cummings had asked a question about making sure, as a community, we were doing everything we could to ensure equity and distribution of our vaccines. And Ms. Blackburn answered the question, but I know that the county's been doing some work as well. That's been a concern expressed for months, not just in terms of vaccinations, but also with testing and general care. Would you mind speaking to that for a minute?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to make sure, I asked Matt Cavell if he would come forward just for a moment. I want to make sure that we addressed Commissioner Cummings' question there in terms of that. We certainly, you all recall, that the board approved a proposal that was before you for us to engage in that effort with our community partners. And I just thought I'd ask Matt to kind of round out that response.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator, commissioners. As the administrator has just gestured to, in January, you had passed a comprehensive public information and education campaign to build trust and confidence in the COVID-19 vaccine to minority and underserved and hard-to-reach communities. That's taken a lot of different forms, but it involves Saks Media Group for the development of comprehensive campaign collateral, website, social media presence, messaging, and delivery. And in addition, it engages Reverend Holmes at the Capital Outlook for building, again, community influencers that will increase the trust and confidence in the COVID-19 vaccine, as well as answering directly the concerns that folks have about public health and public safety measures, such as vaccinations. In addition, it engages Dr. Elaine Bryant in grassroots or door-to-door safely outreach and education in communities that may be hesitant to receive the vaccine, if only for continued education and addressing concerns. So out of those three groups, there are many different partners associated with them, at our major hospitals, as well as county schools, as well as obviously the Florida Department of Health in Leon County. And I could go on. But that comprehensive effort is just beginning now, and will continue for the months ahead as we continue to get more vaccine.
Thank you very much, Matt. Ms. Blackburn, I'm going to wrap this up with just a, just a quick question. I know we need to, I know we need to move this meeting along. I've received some questions and concerns from constituents about the order of priority for people with disabilities when it comes to vaccinations. Right now, I believe they're listed as priority 1B, which is not in the current at-risk group of, you know, 65-plus and first responders. Have you heard anything from the state about reevaluating that? Because from what I've read, people with disabilities are many times more susceptible to severe COVID-19-related illnesses, should they contract the virus?
Yes, I would agree with what you're saying. And I know that TMH has a pilot. They are a pilot site for choosing the highest-risk, vulnerable populations to be immunized. And I believe people with disabilities are included in that, maybe not spelled out, but it's perhaps under the category of physician decision. So I think there is consensus that that is a group that is at risk, at high risk, here in the community.
Ms. Blackburn, could you give any recommendations for people with disabilities, given the current status of what they can do perhaps to obtain a vaccine if they're not over 65?
Yes. They should contact their physician, their healthcare provider, and ask to be placed on the list.
Okay, okay. Well, one thing, Ms. Blackburn, one thing I'd like to do going forward is I want to try to keep tabs with you on that category of people awaiting vaccines. From what I understand, it's a group that is much, you know, greatly impacted by COVID-19, much more than the general population, like other groups too. I want to talk with you about that going forward, too. Thank you very much. All right, seeing as we're done with comments and questions, Ms. Blackburn, thank you very much for your time, as always. Greatly appreciate the updates you're providing us. And good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the order business, we're moving on to consent. Mr. County Administrator, are there any, I do have one point to make, but are there any agenda items pulled from consent, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have agenda items six, eight, and 12. And I may be preempting you on, Commissioner Chairman, on eight, but six, eight, and 12. And we also have one virtual speaker on item three.
Okay, okay. Let's see. Well, is there a motion to pull those three items from consent? Is, we need a motion, don't we? Especially on the two new ones?
Sure. I move that we adopt the consent agenda with the exceptions of items that the county administrator mentioned.
The motions are made and seconded, Mr. and Madam County Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say, to the extent any of the consent agendas had not been pulled at least 24 hours in advance of pursuant to board policy, then that would require some other action by the board.
Okay, great. So, so the motion has been made and seconded in order. The motion is in order. So all is in favor of the motions as, yeah, Commissioner Maddox.
Before we take the motion, can I hear the speaker on item number three?
We can do that. Well, let's pull this, let's pull the items from the agenda first, if you don't mind, to take them out of consent, and then we'll go ahead and listen to...
Point of order, I believe, Commissioner...
Madam County Attorney?
I believe Vice Chair Proctor's motion was to approve the consent agendas, except for the ones that have been pulled. So that was...
Oh, I see. Okay, you're right. Stand corrected. Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Commissioner Maddox, you're correct. Let me go ahead and, there's, I believe you have one speaker on item number three. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. We have a speaker on item three, Bart Bibler. Commissioners, I'll also note at this time that all written comments that were received have been distributed to the board. Again, prior to the meeting, all registrants for public comments have received instructions on how to participate. But I will do just a quick refresher, as we have our virtual speaker on deck here. So as a reminder to all callers, you'll be identified by your name and asked to provide comments for up to three minutes. For those joining by video, you may experience a few-second transition as we bring you into the meeting. When you are asked to speak, you'll be added to the meeting and will be prompted to unmute your device. And if you choose to activate your video, again, you'll receive an automated prompt to unmute your device. Once prompted, please state your name and address for the record. And again, keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you experience any technical difficulties during your call, please bear with them, with us, and we will try to resolve those. Thank you very much. Bart Bibler.
Mr. Bibler, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sir. Good afternoon. My name is Bart Bibler. I'm founder of I Hope Inc., LLC. I reside at 3673 Mossy Creek Lane here in Tallahassee. I Hope Inc. is a social purpose business and was created to improve race relations and crime prevention in Leon County. With the assistance of Tom Taylor and Maisha Mitchell, our involvement in organizing the 32304 Prosperity for All summits focused our mission on poverty reduction. I want to applaud the commission for a couple of the strategic initiatives that you approved unanimously at your retreat. First of all, congratulations to Vice Chairman Bill Proctor on your initiative to develop a plan to address poverty and inequities in 32304 in collaboration with the city and other community partners. If not for your leadership, there would not have been any 32304 summits. And secondly, congratulations to Chairman Rick Miner for your initiative to address food insecurity down to a neighborhood block level. I hope that we can work on these initiatives together. My comment is about the Leon County Strategic Plan and also about the Southern Strategy Comp Plan Amendment, item number 13. I would ask you to consider a poverty reduction goal, such as a reduction of 20% within five years. Your key community metrics could be amended to include this economic or quality-of-life goal. The list of performance measures for the Southern Strategy includes poverty rate. I believe we need a goal for the Southern Strategy area, and we need a poverty reduction goal for Leon County. Finally, I want to update you regarding the United to Ensure Prosperity for All of Leon County virtual event. It is being rescheduled and will be held on Friday, March 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The Facig Brooks Law Firm has become an event sponsor. Registration information will be sent out in a couple weeks. The agenda includes setting a poverty reduction goal and some examples and options of how to achieve it. I want to emphasize that city and county commissioners will not be asked to be co-hosts, and your pictures will not be on the event flyer. But all of you are invited to participate as panelists, listening and asking questions but not voting, only observing community support and considering possible future commission actions. And the second virtual event is being planned for Thursday, May 20, focused on the Bridges Out of Poverty programs. The agenda will include examples of Bridges communities around the nation and the importance of workforce stability and employee resource networks. These programs provide employers a substantial return on their investment by improving employee retention and reducing the cost of training new employees. I hope that you will join in these important community conversations. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Bibler, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us today. Mr. County Administrator, any other items, any other speakers wishing to speak on consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay. Motion has been made by Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox, to accept the consent items except for number six, number eight, and number 12. All is in favor of the motion... All who are in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, Mr. County Administrator, will you please introduce the first item pulled from consent?
My fault, Mr. Chairman. It was item 8 that was pulled, not item 6. So if we could get, if you could facilitate a motion for item 6, and then we could go to the next two items.
No problem. Thanks for keeping us on our toes. Any motion to staff recommendation, Commissioner Dozier? Seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. All who are in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, on item 8, it is the second performance agreement and assured device on Summerfield Phase 1 subdivision, and I will hand it over to you for the disclosure.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. My wife is a realtor, and one of the other realtors with the brokerage firm has closed on a property in Summerfield and is, has two other properties under contract. Now, the brokerage firm that she works for will get a partial commission from the sales of those two properties. My wife does not expect any financial benefit coming from that partial commission to the brokerage, but in, upon consultation with the county attorney, it doesn't appear that there's a conflict of interest. However, under Section 286.012 Florida statutes, I'm permitted to abstain when there's an appearance of a conflict, which I intend to do. So that's why I'm abstaining from this agenda item number 8, and we'll leave it to the commission to decide on this, on the actual agenda item number 8. I'm sorry, Vice Chair Proctor, you had a, was it a motion for you, from you, sir?
Recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox has a motion for staff recommendation. It's been seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All who are in favor, say aye? All opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously with myself abstaining. Mr. County Administrator, will you please introduce the next item pulled from consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the next item pulled is item number 12. It's a status report on our curbside collection services, and it was pulled by Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, as usual, I have pulled the status report off consent. I have told the county administrator that I will probably not do this for the duration of the contract, but I have thought it's important to bring this information forward into our discussion. And unlike the past few quarterly reports, if I'm not mistaken, this one, you know, we see the final numbers for 2020. This is the first time we've seen those numbers for the complaints. This is on page 2 of the item. And, Mr. County Administrator, we could address this at a future meeting. If we don't have the information right now, I do not want to prolong this. I would kind of rather not wait until the next quarterly report, but we could discuss that if there's information we could bring back soon, even in an email. But it was significant to me that while the liquidated damages have dramatically decreased, we're at 30,000 this year versus, or for 2020 versus 201,000 plus in 2019, that looks like a really good indication of progress. The complaints, however, we are at the highest number of complaints and requests received by Waste Pro since 2014. And that was really kind of jarring to me to see that the complaints have gone up. Now, Mr. County Administrator, I recognize that it's complaints and requests received. So I'm wondering again, and we don't have to do this today for time's sake, but if we can get an understanding of the nature of those complaints and requests, a breakdown, and how Waste Pro is addressing them, I just want to better understand how the liquidated damages could drop so dramatically while the complaints continue to go up. And you can speak to that now, again, sir, and give me any...
Mr. County Administrator?
Yeah, if you have any comments now.
Sure. And we're happy to do it either way, but we could probably clarify it quickly. I'd like to ask Maggie Terrio, who is joining us virtually, to respond to that.
As Maggie comes up, I'll say, I didn't ask you this in briefing yesterday, Mr. County Administrator, so I was worried that I might be putting you all on the spot, but I'm sure, as always, Maggie can answer the question.
Maggie, I think you're on mute.
I'll do my best here. Can you hear?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Yes, Commissioner Dozier and County Administrator, you raised a valid question, and you struck at the core of it by noting that that is a blend of both complaints and requests. Happy to delve in much more detail in an email if that's a productive next step, but predominantly requests may include and are dominated by bulk service requests. And as our contract is structured, that responsibility is on the customer to request an item be picked up, such as a mattress or a large water heater. So certainly, we can drill down deeper to provide you more enlightening insight into those numbers. And what is a complaint, also in the further detail that we'll be able to provide you, you'll see that there's a difference in distinguishing a validated complaint versus merely a complaint from a citizen. A citizen may call to report, you know, that you didn't service my cart, but that then we have to go the next step and validate, well, did the truck manage to service every other cart on the road? It would likely perhaps be that the citizen didn't have the cart out on time. So just a complaint doesn't necessarily equal a liquidated damage or necessarily suggest wrongdoing by the customer, but I'd be happy to provide further detail on an email, Vince, County Administrator, if that's productive.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Mr. Chair, as expected, you helped clarify that, and, Mr. County Administrator, Maggie, I think an email just with some of that detail, I'm sure you have it in your reporting, no time pressure on that, but I would appreciate seeing that breakdown, but this is very helpful. Thank you, and thank you for your team. I know this has been years of work.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. And Maggie, I just want to kind of echo what Commissioner Dozier has said and requested. My office has received far fewer complaints about Waste Pro, but the ones we have received have been very critical, very critical. And so I think having a breakdown of that, of those stats that Commissioner Dozier was referring to would be really helpful for me as well, but thank you for everything that you're doing. Once we actually do hear from a constituent about Waste Pro service, we contact your office, and very often, and almost always, and very quickly, the matter is dealt with very satisfactorily. So I just want to thank you and your team for that very much. All right, seeing as no other comments on item number 12, is there a motion for item number 12?
Motion for staff recommendation.
Motion's been made for staff recommendation. Is there a second?
No.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, next order of business, we have citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on non-agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have two speakers on non-agenda items. The first one is Henry Choice.
Mr. Choice, so welcome, sir. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Chairman, my agenda deals with something that was finalized two years ago. I sold a food program to the state. Commissioner Dozier was there, I think Proctor was there, but this virus thing started, and they stalled. So I've been waiting almost two years to talk to the governor of the city council about recommendation of paying or the sale of the program. What I want to do is set up a date, Commissioner Dozier, so we can finalize this thing. It's been going on two years.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Sims. Really appreciate you coming today. I think, I think Commissioner Dozier is motioning that she will, she will reach out after you, after, after the meeting, sir. Thank you very much for coming.
The next speaker card we have on citizens to be heard on non-agenda items is Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, thank you for joining us. You have three minutes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Point of order before you start the clock, Mr. Chairman. My speaker card indicated two items, which would allot me six minutes, but they combined mine to three minutes.
Okay, yes, sir. You have three minutes for your first item, and a second, three minutes for your second.
Thank you for your generosity. I want to speak on item number 11. It's in reference to the placement of a homeless shelter on Mayhand Drive. I'm not coming in an accusatory way, but I look to this government here for leadership and guidance and setting up a parameter so individuals, like, I mean, situations like this does not put the community against one another. It is a good thing that what Ms. Miller is doing, but the way it was done tainted it. And I live out there. And, Mr. Chairman, I've already got clarification from the Capitol that I can say white people. I live out there with them white people, and they ain't all bad, but their concerns are legit. So let's use this as a mechanism in your boards and your coods that we can foster these things together, because when it went up as a cold shelter, people from my neighborhood were taking blankets and things. And it hurts, the most victim of this whole thing are the homeless people. So I'm looking to this government. I commend our employees, Mr. Vance, for their dedication. So I'm not coming accusatory. I'm coming because someone has to take the lead on this issue. And I'm asking that you all take the lead. The Bible says that the poor we will have always, so this is not going away. So it should be a strategic plan. My next item is an un-agenda item that I would like to invite each and every one of you on the French Town Rising Tour. Your Sunday School teacher, County Commissioner Carolyn Cummins have already come down. Our community has suffered great loss of unknown individuals, but they were people. And like I shared with the county commissioner as we walked that garden down there, these are ready-made projects that Nick are ready for out-of-the-box thinking when we talk about investing in our communities of color. And what we did, and she's right there, and you don't never lie on the Sunday School teacher, we showed her that we do have a plan. And not only do we have a plan, Commissioner Dozier, it's methodically thought out. And not only is it methodically thought out, we are doing what we can with what we got to make it happen. And so I'm imploring you to come. The Sunday School teacher gave us 30 minutes. Well, she gave Karen the other 30, but she gave us time. It's so clear there. And Commissioner Dozier, if you think that Pharaoh's biscuits are good, Dee's Kitchen is there now. Try them cornbread muffins. I am now a business partner at French Town, and I will no longer allow you to define us. We will define us. We are taking control of our destiny, and we are shoving our plan down your throat. Come touch and see. Aretha Franklin said, "Give them something they can feel." These are ready-made projects that will make a long-lasting, sustainable impact in French Town. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Commissioner. Promise made, promise kept. Look forward to seeing you, Mr. Nick, and corn muffins.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. County Administrator, are there any other speakers who wish to speak on non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six virtual speakers in the queue under non-agenda items. The first one is Brandy Berry.
All right, Mr. Brandy Berry. Ms. Berry, I don't know if you can hear us, but please state your name for the record, and you have your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
I'm being told we do not have Ms. Berry on. We're going to be moving to Jesse Jones.
All right, Mr. Jones. You have three minutes for the, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Jesse Jones. I live at 1737 Catherine Drive, Tallahassee, Florida 32308. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. I'm here today because I received a flyer stating to protect the Mayhand Corridor for me to speak out for the relocation of CityWalk at this specific meeting. Well, I support CityWalk as a church, and I support CityWalk as a shelter. I live within 1,500 feet of CityWalk, closer than most of my neighbors in the Grant Hills, Greater Brent Hills community. I'm a broker, and I own 850 Realty. I represent myself and not the opinion of the entire Greater Brent Hills community. We are a community that is divided in our opinions, but we all yearn for solutions, vision, and leadership. We have more fear of my fellow neighbors' reaction to the shelter's residents than I have fear of these residents at the actual shelter. Some of my neighbors have even boasted about following and harassing the homeless. My fellow neighbors thought it was important to speak out at a committee mission and at a county committee, commission meeting, even though it is a rezoning issue by the city commission. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for pointing this out in your swift reply to my email. I believe it is important for our county commissioners to understand that homelessness affects more than just the city. It affects the county, too. According to the city commission meeting on February 10, there are possibly over 800 homeless people in immediate need of shelter in our city. I spoke to a representative from the Kearney Center today, and they can only shelter about 250 at this time. The BBCOC just mentioned that there are 100 people that are in need of shelter without access to it at this moment, some of whom are unaccounted-for, unregistered in our city, living on the streets, living in the woods, living near our backyards. If we remove this shelter, the homeless not only remain, they increase. I believe that CityWalk has the capacity to shelter over 100 residents, but only has about 60 residents at the moment. That's 60 residents off of the streets right now, many of whom have jobs, some are the elderly, some are the disabled. CityWalk is providing a vital and needed service to our city and for our county. So my neighbors have demonized this church for opening their doors to the needy and caring for the less fortunate. I've toured the shelter. I've toured the church. That's right, you heard me. CityWalk is a church, and my neighbors, in their anger, want to relocate this church because it doesn't benefit them. Imagine how these same neighbors would react if people were requesting that their church be relocated. My neighbors want it gone because they do not see the benefit in a shelter during the cold winter months, during a pandemic, during, to the greater need of the city, to the greater need of the county.
Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, your time has expired, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Brian Webb.
Hello, Mr. Webb. Thank you for being here. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Mr. Webb?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Webb?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can. We can hear you.
Hi, I'm Brian Webb. My address is 1705 Mahan Drive. And I, the last speaker, respectively, you know, he is not, does not have the right perspective on this shelter. We're not opposed to helping the homeless whatsoever. And my property is the property to the west on his closest property that far exceeds 1,500 feet as his home states. But we're not opposed to helping the homeless. We are opposed for this location to be there with CityWalk. They're illegally operating. And let me read the mission, if I may, of CityWalk's mission. And this program exists to help men who have a desire to make the transition from incarceration back into the community as a transformed and productive citizen. On their own mission statement, they claim they specialize in the needs of sexual offenders. Now, that doesn't sound like a family with two kids. They specialize in the needs of sexual offenders. I think your last person needs to listen to this. And drugs and alcohol. It also says, "We work with the addiction program." They cover addiction recovery for both alcohol, drugs, and mental health issues. I would like to see someone that has provided evidence that they have the capability to provide those services to these individuals. They are all around my property constantly. I'm not opposed to helping individuals. I've actually donated to the Kearney Center to benefit the homes. But what I do, and the Mahan location is just inappropriate. It's detrimental to the neighborhood, the schools, and the sex offenders are just not compatible with a daycare across the street or schools down at the next intersection or businesses in the area. And she stated that she's going to put a fence, and this is, you know, whom it is, Ms. Miller states she's going to put a fence around to secure the homeless shelter. Well, the fence is only as good as the time they're in there. You know, to say you're going to use a fence to keep the public safe, and she also states that the residents don't have access to the neighborhoods because it's a four-lane highway. I have multiple pictures. I know I've sent you letters. There are a lot of individuals being pulled into this area for various reasons, and not all of them are taken into the shelter. So what do they do? They go to the nearest local business. That's either the convenience store or my medical center. And they stay the night. So I have to bring this to your attention. I know they're going through the DRC. It's not your fault that they're there. I'm not suggesting that.
Mr. Webb? I'm sorry, sir, your time has expired. Thank you very much for resonating with us today. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Samantha Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, you have three minutes, ma'am, and please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Thank you.
All right. Today, I would like to talk about the need for relocating the CityWalk homeless shelter. On CityWalk's own website, it states that CityWalk's transitional housing serves those who have struggled with substance abuse and/or chronic homelessness, as well as ex-offenders who have become homeless after being released from incarceration. The proposed facility will target these specific individuals. They are proposing a capacity of 64 individuals. The result is an adverse impact on the entire surrounding area, including residents and businesses. We have already seen this adverse impact when the shelter was operating full-time, non-permitted through December and January. I have made lots of claims, I sent you guys emails, about having sex offenders and drug addicts live right near me. Still have many of my neighbors. And these points are very valid. It's not an insensitive effort to stereotype the homeless, but these are Renee Miller's own words. I can tell you about the negative impact the residents have had. I can tell you about the negative impact of the businesses. But you guys have already heard all of that. Most of the businesses are small and locally owned. Today, I am asking help to navigate this convoluted situation. TPD has not made a public statement on the violation of Florida Statute 775.215, which addresses five registered sexual offenders and predators residing within 500 feet of a daycare center. The city commissioners are now saying that they have been advised by legal counsel to not comment on the shelter. And at this point, we really need you guys to step up as a leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next speaker, please, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final speaker on this item is Brian Forbign.
Mr. Forbign, welcome, sir. You've got three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Forbign, can you hear us, sir?
Calling again, Brian Forbign.
All right, Mr. Forbign. Sorry, we're going to go ahead and move on, sir. If you'd like to, you can email us, and we'll make sure that the commissioners see your comments. Thank you very much. Is that the final speaker?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to general business, Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the first item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item provides the board with a status report on the upcoming progress, or in the process, rather, to update the Southern Strategy goal of the Comp Plan. Commissioners, every three years, the State of the Southern Strategy Status Report is required by the Comp Plan. This periodic report tracks our progress of the community's success in achieving the goals of the Southern Strategy, which includes encouraging quality land development, redevelopment, and employment opportunities in Southern Leon County. Importantly, Commissioners, this is not the actual report. What this agenda item does is provide specific recommended efforts that will be undertaken in the months ahead. All of the efforts to gather data, gain public input, generate possible recommendations for improving the Southern Strategy area will occur during the remainder of the current year and throughout the 2021 Comp Plan Amendment cycle. While the board may wish to provide additional guidance, a final direction on moving forward with the Southern Strategy update will be sought at your upcoming March 23 joint Comp Plan meeting with the City of Tallahassee, City Commission. The final process will include broad public business and civic involvement, and the completed report will be presented to the board in September of this year. Based on the report findings and future board direction, any additional Comp Plan changes would occur in the 2022 Comp Plan update next year. And Commissioners, Cherie Bryant, our Planning Department Director, is with us and is available to provide a brief presentation, should that be the desire of the board, or is available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
We have no speakers on this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioners, any comments or questions? Mr. Dozier?
Mr. Chair, I must have misheard. I thought we were having a presentation from Cherie, but she's just available for comment or for questions.
If the board would like to see the presentation, we can certainly do that. Any objection to the presentation? All right, seeing none. Cherie, please, thanks, welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen. One moment, please. Well, it disappeared right as I was getting ready to share. If it doesn't come up in just a moment, what I'm going to do is just going to talk to you very quickly of my key points.
As long as you don't have a cat filter, we're in good shape.
What's that, sir?
As long as you don't have a cat filter, you're in good shape, so.
No, and no cat filter. That's funny. We checked it beforehand, and it worked just fine, and now, for some reason, it's not here. So rather than belabor the point, what I'll do is I'm only going to speak for just a couple of moments. And that is, just as the County Administrator stated, it is, the status report is to prepare for the March 23 a joint workshop with the city and county commission to talk about this in more depth. And also, as mentioned, the goal of the Southern Strategy is to focus on additional development and redevelopment, population growth, and increased employment in the Southern Strategy. It's about, the Southern Strategy is, as its name would suggest, is on the southern part of the urban service area, and it's about 22 square miles. It's also about 20% in the county, and about 8% of it's in the city. You may remember, recognize some of the names. It's the Capital Cascade Sector Plan, the Oak Ridge Sector Plan, West Pensacola Sector Plan. In all, there were, there were seven sector plans and neighborhood plans that were adopted to implement the goals of, or to further define and implement the goals of the Southern Strategy. The regular, as you heard, the regular updates are required every three years. And so at this time, typically, what we would do is go back and do a lot of data analysis and research and bring that back to you. However, since it's about 23 years since this was, this policy has been put in place, we're looking instead to take it as a chance to dig in deeper, work with the community, and update the goals and policies within the Comp Plan. The key thing I wanted to share with you today were just the focus areas and the key milestones. The focus areas are, and these are listed in the agenda item, housing and development trends. We're going to focus also on looking at past and planned infrastructure projects and barriers and incentives to development. But the other key thing is, while the goals and policies support redevelopment, we really want to put a focus on protecting the character of the existing communities. And those can be done through things such as specific aspects of the zoning code and making certain that anything new is building character with the existing. Affordable housing, of course. The role of sector and neighborhood planning, of course. And then other two things, analysis of possible expansions of USA, if that looks, if that's appropriate. And then considering areas that might be appropriate for annexation with a specific goal of trying to fill in some of the infrastructure gaps. And if you look at the city limits in this part of the county, they really jog a lot and sometimes cut neighborhoods and have resulted in some inconsistencies as far as infrastructure. And then also, another key thing that I wanted to point out is that we'll be adding to those focus areas. The first round of public outreach is to find out what the public, what the people who work and invest and live in this area want to do as far as the focus areas for our, for the work that's going to be happening over this year. Leading into that, it's the second thing that I wanted to really highlight during this update, and that is key milestones. March 23, of course, is to discuss and finalize this process at the joint meeting. The first round of outreach will begin shortly after that, and that's where we'll be asking for some feedback on the focus areas I just mentioned. Then finally, in late spring, we'll be working, going into summer, working on some recommended policy updates to address those focus areas. That'll carry us into the summer, in which we'll have a second round of public engagement to look at projected, those proposed policy updates. And then finally, as the County Administrator mentioned, September and October will be bringing back the report itself and then following that with the actual comprehensive plan amendments as necessary. And then highlighting any other, there may be other things that come out that aren't necessarily Comp Plan-related, and of course, we'd be working with the appropriate departments and partners to implement those as well. So that is my update for tonight. This is, the staff recommendation is simply to accept the Southern Strategy Area Status Report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bryant. First, on the, in the queue, we've got Vice Chair Proctor. Vice Chair Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I move staff's recommendation.
Motion has been made for staff recommendation by Commissioner, Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Any discussion?
Chairman, thank you. I'm sorry. With discussion points, I want to thank staff for a luminous amount of information. It teases out a quantitative roadmap setting forth the socio-economic dynamics of the area. It does not reflect the qualitative failure of our county and city commissions to actually actualize various goals that have been set forward. I look forward to our discussion with the city commission on this important item in March. And because there have been two cycles of commissions that have evolved since adoption of this measure, we've become the third generation of commissioners who may sit on the fence and allow all of these good words to remain on paper. But we sit on the fence with respect to putting money, putting staff, and commitment to fulfill some of these objectives. My ask to this commission is that we will not be the full third generation of county commissioners that have sat here since this thing has been adopted and we actually leave it just a commitment on paper and not fulfill. There are so many data points that I won't begin to get into this evening, but you saw all of them listed as well. Those data points suggest that help and targeted help is needed. I believe the median income of household, family income is like $22,000. The health indicators are there. Housing indicators are there. The crime indicators are there. I mean, this thing is well indexed to give us a picture of the struggle like quality. And I just ask the commission that if we take this item, immerse ourselves in its possibilities and see moving forward if we are the generation of commissioners who will actually walk and not just talk about the Southern Strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Mr. Dozier?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Echoing Commissioner Proctor's comments, I think this is a robust item. Thank you, Cherie, and I'm glad you brought it forward before our joint meeting. I guess this is helpful. I do think we've done a lot, particularly through Blueprints and some other work in the area, but there's a whole lot more to do, Commissioner Proctor, and you know. One of the things that struck me in reading this item is the reference to aligning city and county policies that do not directly relate to land use with the Comp Plan on the Southern Strategy area. And, Mr. County Administrator, I would appreciate if we could have, at least as a county commission, if not both, a conversation about strategies we can implement to make sure those policies are aligned. We do this with our strategic plan. Could we reference back to the Southern Strategy area in economic development policy or something like that in the future to help guide us and make sure that we are reflecting that data and the information in this good effort in this report going forward?
Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, absolutely. I don't see any problems at all with that. We'd be happy to take that directly.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And I saw, Cherie, you were nodding there, so I hope that will work for planning as well. The, a couple of things in the city's list of ideas. I really appreciated staff's list of issues that you were going to cover. I really, I think they've got a good list here. The infrastructure utility, for utilities, the annexation question, urban service. urban service area, I think we're going to have to be really strategic in dealing with that. Commissioner Proctor, you've brought this up for a long time, and I think we've had issues over the years. I'm really glad we have a city commission that's interested in exploring this, so that's going to be a good, hopefully, product of this process. The—I did wonder if Innovation Park and the proposed road extension from Stucky to Orange Avenue, if that's going to come into play here. They've had a lot of conversations with the Providence neighborhood in the past, and there's more work to do in the future. So because that is a timely thing or a project, and it relates to the Providence neighborhood, which is referenced in the SSA, is that conversation about that project in Innovation Park and the potential for job creation there going to be tied into this conversation? I guess it was for Shari. Yeah.
Yeah, sure. I—you know, that's a very good example of things that, just by talking with interested parties and stakeholders, come out of it. So, you know, that's—the first round of outreach is to identify questions like that, and with the—you know, considering where the road extension is proposed, it certainly seems like it warrants some discussion and consideration. Yes.
Great. Well, for my part, I think—I spoke with someone from Providence neighborhood just in the last week and a half or so, and I think they will be interested in having that as part of this conversation. So the last thing, and I'm going to be—
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Dozier, your time is up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we extend Commissioner Dozier's time to speak on item 30.
I'll second that. All in favor of the motion to extend the time to Commissioner Dozier, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Dozier.
Big items, a lot of moving pieces. Been thinking about this a lot, and I was going to wait for our comp plan discussion, but decided that it'd probably be appropriate to bring it up now. I'm Mountain County Attorney. I'm going to be very careful with this. The perspective of the respective county and city commissions vis-à-vis decisions made at the Planning Commission. We have some disagreements at times on decisions that are coming through the Planning Commission that may not be supported by the City and County Commission, and we have an ongoing case right now, which is why I'm being careful with what I'm saying. I'm not going to cite an example, but I do think it may be in our interest to have a discussion with our city colleagues about how we interpret things such as master plans and the integrity of those master plans. That's going forward, to make sure we are all on the same page, and if we need to look at our policies, we should do that. I think it is in our interest to be working collaboratively with our Planning Commission, and, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, that is a little vague. Like I said, I want to be delicate, but I wanted to raise the issue because it may be within this conversation and others that, you know, it's really timing—or time to dig into the Planning Commission's structure and those roles. Mountain County Attorney, did I overstep there at all? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Vice Chair Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, just two data points that I had marked, and I want to make sure. Commissioners, I wanted to look at the building permits, which from building permits, most recent, I guess, they've taken a snapshot, is 2000 to 2004.
Mr. Chairman, I'm so sorry. Point of order. Commissioner Proctor—Vice Chair Proctor already spoke on this agenda item and used his three minutes, so it would require a motion to extend?
Is there a second? I'll second that. All those in favor of extending the time for Vice Chair Proctor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Jackson out of chambers. Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'll be a lot brief, and it sounds a lot better with the second mask off. Residential property in the Southern Strategy area represents residential permit—building permits is 3.8%. The building permit is 3.8%. That alone tells you a lot about economic value and the strangulation of value not rising. It's stagnated. And in terms of the largest category of permits for units in the area under Attachment Number Two, 5.7% is for mobile homes. So our demand for mobile home permitting is nearly twice what we're seeking for residential, single-family, and so forth. That says a lot. And then, secondly, with respect to the meeting, the CRPTA today, Commissioners Dozier and Maddox and Chairman Minor, which you serve on, I found in Attachment Two, Page 37, that at the very, very bottom of this—I mean, I mean, at the very bottom—I mean, this is just even when you're writing, you have to get a magnifying, but at the very bottom of Table Seven, dealing with transportation projects in the Southern Strategy area, you see this road project, Woodville Highway, from Tram Road to Capital Circle Southeast, it was to go from two to four lanes. PD and E was there for the next phase of funding. This is 17 years ago. 17 years ago, with the 2004 slide. This is the commitment that we can chronicle and—which is a part of our public record—that this would be a two-lane highway and not a one-way pairing. So the more than 400 signatures that you received at the CRPTA from citizens from that area before, when they said that that one-way pairing and a roundabout that would come out there at Tram Road, that's the difficulty because this document actually captures just how long it's been on the books, and we write there for PD and E for—the four-laning of Woodville from Tram Road down to Capital Circle Southeast. So when you see a—why people feel jilted and why they just don't give a damn about what public commissioners are saying, city nor private, it's these kinds of promises that have been on the books, laying dormant, and then the state just changing, decommitting, and then recommitting to something that the people never embraced, and it's just being forced. So I wanted to capture Table Seven of Attachment Two as a part of the public record, which gives witness to the jilting of citizens in the South Side. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Seeing as no other speakers in the queue, we'll go ahead and move on the item. Motion made for staff recommendation, which is Option One, to accept the SSA objective report made by Commissioner Proctor—Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Jackson out of chambers. Mr. County Administrator, will you please introduce the next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item provides a status update on the amphitheater support space being constructed at Cascades Park. I know many of you have had the opportunity to tour it, and others will have the opportunity soon. It seeks the Board's approval of the third amended and restated interlocal agreement with the City of Tallahassee regarding the use and programming of the new space. In short, Commissioners, the revision to the existing interlocal agreement is related to the county's use of the amphitheater to include these new complimentary spaces funded with tourism development tax dollars and in support of the county's concert series and other events at Cascades Park. Like the amphitheater, the city will own and maintain the support space once constructed and will be available for public use. The proposed interlocal agreement, Commissioners, does not make any changes to concert curfews or the number of events or concerts allowed each year. As you're well aware, the county's concert series has been suspended due to the pandemic, but we're hopeful that we can resume that in the near future. In support of the county's concert series, this item also seeks the Board authorization of the county administrator to execute a long-term lease and license agreement with the city for a ticket office and the visitor information center at Cascades Park, and a three-year extension of a contract with Scott Carswell Presents through June 30, 2024. Again, very excited to see the years of planning, as I know the Commissioners are years of planning, and construction come to fruition, and we look forward to playing an active part in activating the park and the amphitheater space. And this item is recommending Options One through Four. Happy to answer any questions that you might have, and we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. We do have a box dinner for us that I'd like to try to see if we can break at about 5:40 or such, around that time. So I just want to see if we could—if we can, keep our comments brief. If we need to, we'll suspend, we'll motion recess, and then come back to this item afterwards, but if we can finish it before that point, it'd be great.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dozier. I do have Vice Chair Proctor in the queue first, but yes.
But I need to speak before this discussion to disclose the conflict.
Oh, yes, of course.
And this, I assume, will not count against my three minutes during discussion. This is something—this is procedural, correct?
Yeah.
I would like to request if it's amenable to the Board to separate Options One, Two, and Three from Option Four for the purpose of discussion. I have a conflict for Option Four. Scott Carswell is extended family, but—so it's not a direct conflict, but for a perception of conflict, I have recused myself every time his contract has come up for discussion, so I will be recusing myself for Option Four. But, Mr. Chair, unless there's any objections, I would like to participate in the discussion on Options One, Two, and Three.
Okay. You made the motion to split. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor of splitting the motions, Options One, Two, and Three to be considered separately from Option Four, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll just mention now, I will have to disclose a conflict on the next item as well if I can speak in advance of discussion at that time. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, I want to disclose that Scott Carswell is my brother from a different mother, and I don't know if that's a problem, but he is my brother.
I translated that to be a second of the motion. Is that correct, Mr. Chair? All right, so the motion for Option Four, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. Any discussion on Option Four? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Dozier in abstention. All right, now for the rest of the agenda item. Vice Chair Proctor, I have you next in the queue, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I defer to Commissioner Dozier.
Okay, Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was brief. For those of you who have had a tour of the amphitheater support space, wow, a long time coming. It looks fabulous. I can't wait for everyone to see it. I think this is going to take our concert series and festivals to a new level, as well as the public space compliments to Visit Tallahassee and Kerry Post and the city Parks and Rec team who have been working hard on this, and particularly to North American Properties, in my understanding, have saved us a lot of money by working closely with us with the contracts. The only question I have—I have no problem with the contract as stated—and is that we are still very young in managing an amphitheater. The 10 concerts per year, it seems like the right fit right now, and we haven't, to my knowledge—Mr. County Administrator, correct me—ever gotten to 10 concerts a year. But I do think it would be appropriate to build in at this time a five-year review of this contract. Perhaps we learn more about the amphitheater at that time, and we want to look at our agreement with the city, again, not changing anything on their ownership, operations, maintenance, but just an opportunity built in at this time to come back and review that at both commissions and update the contracts if needed. So, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion for Option One, Two, and Three with the addition that we have a five-year update, review, and update if needed of the contract.
Seven.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have ended the speakers' queue for discussion. We have Vice Chair Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think that when we look at the five-year review, we see a phenomenal project which promised to be an open area. I think it exceeded—the public's embracement exceeded all of our expectations. A park in high demand nearly 24/7. We saw—added to it was the restaurant on the south end of the park, which added to it. We saw the gazier waters, beautiful lighting nighttime added to it, and we saw the—these mega buildings that are there now in their shadow creeping over, and I think that it does impact the initial outdoor walking space. It has changed the tenor of the environment, and it has also done something to its ambiance. I'm not sure yet if that's—and I think that one of the things that when people move into those buildings, and as the Commission have heard me say before, I am just hopeful that the people who started off walking in the park will not feel bullied or feel that they're walking on private space, and that offices of the law will come to see about those who don't have a lease with those properties or don't have parking spaces there and so forth. So there's no doubt that we have actually taken $28 million, which we initially built that park for, $28 million. We've added another North American Properties, I believe, that's around 140-some million. We got—we got—we got nearly $200 million public dollars, and I think that not just in the five-year review of what has emerged and stacked and stacked and stacked, but we've got to look at how to coordinate that which is a public space with that which is very much for a high price becoming private space, and to the extent that we can eliminate friction in that ownership stuff is something I think that we have to look at in the future for this property. Those were my comments about not just the pass, but this particular piece of property in the future, and balancing the interest of private owners and public participants.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Proctor. Seeing as no other speakers, the motion made by Commissioner Dozier for Options One, Two, and Three with the addition of a five-year contract review, seconded by Commissioner—was it Vice Chair Proctor seconded that or Commissioner Maddox? Commissioner Maddox seconded the motion. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Right now, I have 5:43. Do I have a motion to recess until 6:00 PM sharp? Any—second, please? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. We convene at 6:00 PM.